The hills.org website to which a simple review of the traffic would have indicated to be false. But the council assumed that every resident had an account on neighbor and uses it regularly, to which a question regarding account ownership and usage would also reveal this to have been false. And of note, there was no mention of the ordinance in the neighbor news section. However, we were notified on the 30th that pets must be kept on leashes. So clearly that was important. The council assumed that every resident would catch and read the single email sent in the middle of the afternoon, the day before the change. The email subject line mentioned a coming change in the speed limit, but neglected to mention that the change would be effective the next day. The council also assumed that every resident in this community has perfect vision unaffected by the aging process. And that we don't have anyone in the community with degenerative eye conditions. Green toned signs with excessively small text placed against greenery throughout the village, the day of the change demonstrated a negligence. And the lack of ADA consideration as well as lacking any adherence to the traffic standards. Either universally accepted or set forth by the Texas Department of Transport. Finally, the council assumed that not a single resident in the community would appreciate. I will wrap it up.
Moving on to Mike Wilson.
I echo Darlene's comments and I will, as they say, yield the floor.
All right. Thanks, Mike. Moving on to Von Drell.
Yeah, no, no public comments for me.
All right. Thank you, sir. Hilda, any public comment? All right, moving on to Diana. Any public comment?
No, I'm good at this time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Carthick, floor is yours. Good morning. All right. Thank you. Is that a Carthick? Thank you. All right. Thanks for the public comment. Oh, oh, sorry.
Yeah, I'm driving. Just making sure this is being broadcast on a public YouTube channel.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I can't hear you very well. And do you mind stating your name? Kind of got, it kind of got worse.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I think the signal might.
All right. I can't hear you, Susan.
I think she was asking about.
Get my address.
The, uh, I think she was asking about.
Can you repeat your start over?
Are you able to repeat briefly?
Yeah, I'm driving. I'm sorry. Um, I was just making sure that this wasn't being. Uh, rebroadcast on a public YouTube channel.
Are we allowed to comment about that?
Well, we are now broadcast.
Yeah, well, so it might be. Uh, shall we allow to make a putt man?
You can answer a factual question.
Okay. Yeah, so we have our, our, um, our Zoom, which is publicly available. Uh, I cannot confirm if anyone that is on. The Zoom right now is concurrently broadcasting on any other. Uh, on any other mode. Um, so that could be, it may or may not be streamed on YouTube, which is. I think the public forum, which would technically allow somebody to do that. Um, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I'm a resident, but I won't, I won't give my address. I, I would.
Yeah, you don't need to.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Public comment? Okay. Yeah, absolutely. Great. Moving on. Um, so next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Items listed on the consent agenda are considered routine and are typically approved in one motion. Council members, if there are any items that they would like to discuss or vote on separately, please indicate so at this time.
Looking for a motion on the consent agenda?
Uh, yeah, actually, yeah, we have a motion to approve.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All right. Any comment?
Uh, I'm going to abstain on item five A because I was not at the meeting in April, but I'll, I'll vote in support of item five B.
Anything else? Okay.
Please second the most. Thank you, sir.
All right, move to, uh, I guess, um, all in favor of approving the consent agenda? All opposed, none, motion carries. Next. All right, moving on to section six of the reports. Uh, we do not have Deputy Lopez in attendance currently, so we go ahead and move on to the Park Liaison Report.
I'll do that. Um, okay. So the big news is Gary Weldon retiring from the committee. Commission. Um, and I want to say as a former resident member of the commission now. Oh liaison, sub liaison, we'll figure that out later today. Um, I've served with him for about a year or so. I personally commend him very much for his long tenured service on the commission. He's leaving the commission well attended, well organized and eager. Uh, Gary has always made himself available, been dependable, enthusiastic and has served with a bright smile. Not sure what else you can ask for. A commissioner, a volunteer. Agreed. Uh, all right. So we had a regular meeting last night, next year evening. And we discussed the possible ice cream social for the last day of spring, the 23rd. Um, so we're kind of working out the details there. That might be co-branded with the club. I sense that they might pitch in. Um, again, still working out the details. Um, if we can pull it off in the short kind of turnaround, then, um, the idea would be to have an ice cream social kind of in June. Similar concept. Um, we also talked about having a movie night in the park in June. Um, we will need to amend the hours of occupancy for the bathrooms and, you know, us being in the park. So again, still working on the details, but wanted to bring that up. Um, and I think we have tentatively set a date for the next, uh, city limit for October 15th.
Excellent. POA liaison.
It's the meeting. I apologize.
No, no, no problem.
Basically, they talked about, uh, there was a lot of residents complaining about the wooden fences that they needed to be replaced. Uh, Tom, the president states that there's not going to be any violations sent out until they figure out what to do. Uh, they couldn't stop it because half of the residents already had switched from wooden fence to whatever they chose. So that's still a major topic for the POA. Other than that, the landscaping was completed at Lomans Crossing. Uh, they thanked Joel for hitting that up. The budget was good and everything been good.
Excellent. Yeah, liaison.
Um, I do not have a lot to report except for the fact that, um, Angie, we will be meeting this Sunday at 6:00 PM.
Moving on to item E, mud liaison.
Angie and I attended the, uh, the Hurst Creek Mud Board Meeting on April the 21st. Um, maybe just three quick items of note for the council. First, uh, the board approved a. Uh, a proposal from the general manager to acquire a 500 kilowatt generator. That would sit up here on this piece of property and would, uh, supply or support the water treatment plant. Um, they already have a generator on the, uh, the end of the. Straw that dips into the lake so they can pull water up. But if they don't have, if power goes out and they don't have any power to the water treatment plant, doesn't do any good to pull the water up. They can't treat it. Um, and so, uh, that'll, that acquisition or that installation will take place over the next. Five, six months. I think the, the total cost for it, uh, with installation and the cost of the materials is. Around a quarter of a million dollars, about 247,000, was it Angie? So that's a preview of coming attraction and it will involve some construction on this property here. Um, that we'll probably have a chance to talk about later on.
Is there gas or is it diesel? Did they talk about?
It'll be diesel.
Okay.
And, um, and there was a little bit of discussion, uh, Matt, about, uh, fumes from the diesel. But they feel like they can vent those up high enough so that it's not an issue for anybody. Um, let's see. Second thing, I just, uh, uh, the general manager pointed out that at this point we have 1,166 residential accounts. Hurst Creek Mud does, um, that are, are signed up. Uh, there are zero service applications for residential service under. Uh, construction right now. So 1,166 is the residential number. I think 52 is the commercial number of accounts they have. Uh, and the general manager did note in his report that the rainfall has been pretty light this year. Uh, February rainfall for the, uh, kind of the Highland Lakes Basin that, uh, that supplies water for Hurst Creek. Was 1.33 inches in February and a slim 1.06 inches in March. So that's of course why we're in stage two water restrictions right now. And that's, that's my report. Excellent.
Can I ask you a question? So, um, my understanding is that Main Street across Lomans, uh, that's going to be part of First Creek. If they're going to service that?
I haven't heard anybody say that. I know that the, uh, the, I think the Water District 17, which is the Lakeway Mud. Uh, I believe they had required some changes to the site plan there so that they could put in an additional water tower. Uh, so I, I know they've got at least part of that development. I don't know that they have all of it.
Okay. The thing I'm wondering about is, you know, do they have all the equipment they need to service Main Street if they get whatever they get? And then the second question I have is they have a very large reserves over there. And my question there is what happens to those reserves when they expand? Because the reserves are essentially provided from people at the hills and then crooked down across the road. So if they're going to expand that rapidly, what happens to the reserves? Those, those reserves really should belong to the hills people, not to.
Yeah, I, I don't know the answer to that, Rick, but, uh, if, if council would like, I'd be happy to kind of put those questions to the, to the mud and see what they say to us.
I'd like to know.
Yeah.
I did hear a similar, similar discussion that you mentioned.
And implications on, on rate, especially during peak demand phases, you know, they move the rates up. And if they're going to also serve that development, does that mean all of the residents may have rate adjustments that go up? Because of that development.
And I'll, I'll say Angie's got a better memory than I do, but at least in the, the mud board meetings that I've attended this year, when I've been the liaison. I don't recall any discussion, uh, at the board meetings about that topic. But it sounds like it's maybe it's timely to bring it to their attention and see what they have to say.
My understanding is that they did get the project like we're doing.
Would you like to, uh, do your law enforcement report?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, bro.
No, no worries. Let me know when they're ready.
Yeah.
Okay, cool. All right. So for the law enforcement report for April, we had one death. Uh, nine, nine one one hangups, one assist Lakeway, nine assist complainants, two protective orders. Twenty-two direct patrols, three selected traffic enforcement, one suspicious vehicle, one traffic hazard. Four check welfareers, uh, one deceased person, two open door window. Uh, one reckless driving, one injury to a child, one disturbance. Uh, conducted four traffic stops, four citations, 17 warnings. Uh, monthly patrol hours totaled to 160 and community contacts was 189. Thank you. How is the, um, last week and a half of the speed limit change?
Um, honestly, in the beginning, I felt like it was a little bit hard. Um, we've had some contacts with people. But, uh, now it's, it's, I feel like they, they see that we're kind of enforcing it. Um, every night we'll have somebody here as far as the constable. Not going to be the weekend stuff, but we do have from in the morning to all the way to the evening, we'll have somebody here. Um, Fridays, Thursdays, I'm trying to get two people out here. So we have two officers conducting traffic. Um, but yeah, I, I mean, in the beginning, I, I think it was a little bit harder for the residents to realize that we're out here enforcing it. And now, um, it's kind of hard to even get them, I'd say, because they're like 27, 28. You know, it's, it's not, it's not even 30.
Yeah, good. Yeah, for, um, for any citations again this week, how many were in it's over 30 versus kind of under 30? And again, I don't, it's obviously your discretion, but I'd just be curious kind of the ratio and see how people react and see how people are adjusting.
Right. So what was the question? I'm sorry.
In terms of like people that you've been enforcing for like 30 and above, like what's the ratio? Do you think that there's still people that are going over 30?
So the ratio for that, uh, of going over 30, I can't really give you like that, like specific number.
Yeah.
It's just really, I think at the beginning it was more the contractors would, and even the residents, like it's been like this for decades. And y'all just changed it. So it's, it was kind of like an eye opening. Like, yes, we've changed, they've changed it. At the same time though, when you drive, you have to keep an eye on the speed limits everywhere you drive.
Yep.
So I, I really didn't give a grace period on that. So because I, I do feel like when you drive.
Yeah. So you did give a grace period. That's good.
Yeah.
And then in terms of reaction, I mean, is it, how frequently do people get aggressive with you? And then in terms of people, you know, calling 911, things of that nature on the constable, does that happen?
So as far as I've worked here, it's happened to me three times.
Okay.
Exact where they've called 911 and they want to speak to the deputy.
Yeah.
What happens in that case? Does it go to you? So if you, when, when, when you call 911, I could see it. So the sheriff's office pick, will pick it up. Um, but since I'm assigned here, obviously I'll take the call as well. So they put on the notes that I was the deputy who. Did the traffic stop and I'm still here at the time. So I could talk to the person. Everything's recorded though. So as soon as I call you, I press my record, everything's recorded. So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's all, basically we were put in like a Freedom of Information Act. That would all be publicly available.
Exactly. Yeah.
Okay, it is public.
Yeah, yeah, because it, it, it's all open records. All, all you have to do is open, uh, open your, uh, records request and it's all.
Yeah. So that would be all public. Okay. Yeah. Um, I'm good.
Right. Now I'd just say thanks a lot for, for helping keep the community safe. Uh, I think it means a lot to everyone. Young families and, and beyond that. So.
No, I have to honestly, I have to thank y'all for kind of backing me up or sticking, you know, if, if I do something, I, I really do feel that now that I have y'all support.
It's important.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, we support the law enforcement and the constable's efforts to keep our neighborhood safe. So please, sorry.
Okay. Morning, Deputy. A couple of questions. The, the report you furnished us today was for April. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So that wouldn't necessarily reflect, uh, traffic stops or anything like that occurring after the speed limit change? That's not in your report that you're providing today?
I think it was through the end of April.
I think when, when did the speed limit change?
May first.
May, May first.
So this is through April. April, this will not reflect any of that.
Yeah, okay, okay. And, and in the report, uh, you, you kind of ran down your service calls that are in the left-hand box there. I, I wasn't sure what, uh, the nine assist complainant service calls were. Can you tell us a little bit about what those are?
Yeah. So it's, it's, it's like a very vague call. So let's say if anybody calls 911.
Mm-hmm.
It's not like the actual specific crime being committed or anything like that. So I'll title it just assist complainant, meaning I just assist the 911 calling. So it, it could be absolutely anything. It could be a flat tire. It could be somebody lost outside of their house.
Okay.
But I have to title it something. So I'll title, I, I will title that call assist complaint.
I got you. And then further down on the list, we had, looks like you had one service call for reckless driving. Do you have any memories we sit here today as to what that call was?
Honestly, I really don't. Yeah. I, I could go back and look at the notes and I can email it to you later, what, uh, what.
That's all right.
Specific call was.
Thank you. That's all I had.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. City administrator report.
We have the flood, um, planes manager update. I took the, uh, required 11 hour, uh. Course and I actually took 15 hours to update myself. Every year you have to take it. So we're legitimate, good. At the hills for right now. Until next year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Mayor's report. There's a few updates for the community, starting with our tri-city emergency management. There was a war in central Texas and event bridge training. So on April 29th, I joined Mayor Kilgore and Lakeway City Leadership to attend a. To attend a training that was coordinated by the Capital Area Council of Governments. To teach us how to utilize the regional notification system. It's basically a tool that local governments can utilize. To warn informed residents about natural disasters and man-made disasters, predominantly for evacuation notices. Uh, number two, community wildfire readiness. We are having a town hall. With LTFR and our emergency management coordinator as well as Lakeway. So officials from LTFR are going to join Mayor Kilgore from Lakeway and myself in a virtual town hall. Uh, you can join us live from the Lakeway City Government's Facebook and our Facebook on May 22nd at 6:00 PM. For an important conversational wildfire risk preparedness and what you can do to protect your home and neighborhood this summer. Uh, item three, latest on Google Fiber update. So we've been working with Google Fiber to push forward any progress that we can. So over the last few weeks, we've had representatives, uh, and contractors working with Google Fiber to visit the neighborhood. To continue diligence around the potential for fiber installation. I will note that they voice concerns around economic feasibility of installing, though they are working to get us answers. And then BK have delayed their decision regarding micro trenching within BK. So we're trying to keep an eye on this and see how that decision may or may not impact our neighborhood going forward. So we'll keep everyone informed as we move along this Google Fiber journey. And then last, speed limit update and community safety reminder. So. I just want to take a moment to recognize the overwhelming support that we've received from residents regarding the recent speed limit change. I'm proud of several on our council that's taken its leadership role seriously, listening to the residents, evaluating longstanding concerns and taking action to improve our community. For nearly two decades, residents have shared feedback on our roads that were not saved at previously posted speeds. Especially with the volume of commercial traffic and the number of non-residents passing through the neighborhood each day. It took the current makeup of this council aligned with priorities and a shared commitment for long-term safely to move forward. Since the implementation, we've received many positive messages from residents knowing the marked improvement in driving behavior. As well as fewer reports of contractors, commercial vehicles speeding through the neighborhood. That's a shift that I and many others were hearing regularly in the past. It's clear that this change is already having this intended effect. Making our streets calmer, safer and more livable for anyone who walks, drives and bikes through our neighborhood. And I would note that it couldn't come at a better time as summer began. So now kids can enjoy the neighborhood safely and experience the neighborhood. In ways that it was always intended. Um, and then lastly, if anybody sees unsafe or irresponsible driving. Whether from cars or the unregistered electric dirt bikes, I strongly encourage you to report to the constable. And then they check in, the constable's on duty regularly to check in with the security office. So if you guys see something, it's easiest. You can call the security office and they can relate to the constable on duty to check out. Um, so I'm proud of everybody for taking the shift seriously. And it's one step in a broader effort to shift the culture of the hills towards civility, uh, courtesy and cooperation. So, thank you.
Can I, can I ask you to share some news on that during your time?
Yeah, yeah.
And so you probably have heard, but yesterday in BK, there was a three-year-old, um, child who was hit. Uh, in the Hill Country Gallery, I care flighted away CPR. Don't know the state of the.
I do.
The child.
Fat skull. Um, and. Yes, it's severe. Just.
Yeah. And so just a terrible incident. And, but this is the exact type of incident that. You know, just one time is way too many and we've taken action in this community to try to avoid from happening here. So. You know, based on my perspective, the feedback from residents, uh, it's without question, uh, was the right decision to lower the speed limits. Considering the, uh, the demographics of the community with a lot of young kids and, and the walkway that offsets. Um, the, the street. So that's what I wanted to add. Thanks a lot.
Great. Moving on to business items. So now we will, council will individually consider and possibly take action. On any of the following items. Item seven, A, discuss, consider and take action on the finance treasury report for April 2025.
We need to discuss it.
Yeah.
They're really good shapes. I think it's been really good shape for less people, but, um. We're going to see the over budget expenses under budget. Have the 45,000 fence and we have other things that we can lay up here. So, um, right now we're running about 2% under where we were last year in expenses. I think about a 4% increase. So as we hold up through, um, we're not going to be over budget. We will make some moves like, um, if you want to have an ice cream thing at the park and as that takes over budget, we would have to adjust some, some for that. But, um, we know how to do it. No, finances are, you know, I'm really happy with the fund uses. Wasn't a year and a half ago, but it's, it's fine now. So, and, uh, we did complete our, um, COVID report for the fence. If that was sent in, uh, before we brought it here, it was the data meeting. I have to tell you, it was the most ridiculous thing I've ever seen in my life, but, um.
There was a lot of questions with very.
Yeah.
Difficult.
Yeah.
Pre-canned answers. I looked through it.
The funny thing you had to deal was, so it asked for your budget, but if your budget was over your award, it didn't accept it. It's like, wow, what does that have to do with anything? And then if you went over your award, e- even if you paid for it yourself. There was a note there that said, you have to return that money to the federal government. And like, hey, this is the greatest thing I've ever seen. So, um, so I adjusted everything and, uh, took some of the road repair out of the report. And I actually combined the report for the dam and the road at the same time, uh, because they were all done pretty much the same time for the same reason, public safety. So. But it's in, um, Angie has the backup. Should anybody call us, she's got all the details in her.
Excellent. Great job getting the audit done and then getting through the filing on. Very important.
Your revenue primarily through, or sales tax. Um, it will be sales tax. Yeah. Real estate taxes, um, actually ended up over budget already. We budgeted 100,000 or 507. So it just tells you how good the Travis County price is. Um, so we're 7,000 over there and we will get some, we get a little bit of real estate taxes coming in for the balance there. But, um, the, uh, sales tax for, um, the club right now, we had 195,000 already, but it was just 300. 26,000 left. Five months, so we put another 100,000. So we should end up at about 340, 345, something like that. Interest, I think it ended up from, um, textbook, it's an interest rate is going to be gone down a little bit. But I think where we are, we'll still have our budget of 65,000.
What do you think? What's our kind of like weighted average interest rate, do you think?
Right now it's a little bit under four.
Oh, still pretty good.
Yeah, it's still pretty good. Yeah. The last year was over five.
Coverage.
Yeah. So, before the election. Finances, finances are good.
Good. Thanks for that day.
Do you have a projection for how much, uh, at the end of the fiscal year, our revenues will be over our expenses?
I haven't done that yet. Probably will do it. Uh, maybe July I'll do it.
And, and you may have said this just now, but currently, how much are our year-to-date revenues over our year-to-date expenses?
Um, probably about 75,000.
Is that in here somewhere? I have a hard time finding it in the.
I don't know where, I, I don't know what report, um, um, Angie and Joy produce. Um, I have my, I have my own report that I use.
Okay.
Um, but I pull everything off the fund view and then I redo it for myself. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'd probably like to see your report.
Yeah, you know, it's interesting to me that Fund View doesn't do that because you would think on the front page, they would go
Have a variance.
There's all our revenues, all the expenses, here's the difference.
Yeah.
It doesn't do that. And I don't understand why it doesn't. But it doesn't. So I do it myself next fall.
So I think what I heard you say is right now we're about seventy-five grand revenues in excess expenses year-to-date. We expect that to go up between now and the end of the fiscal year.
Correct.
And you don't see any significant expenses that are unplanned for in our budget for the rest of the year.
I mean, there's things we're not going to hit. We, you know, the long-term budget is two hundred thousand dollars. It's what we set up last year when Mayor Wharton was here. And we couldn't get there. It looks like maybe we'll get to a hundred fifty. So if we get a hundred fifty, that's fifty thousand under. Okay. We have forty-five thousand for fence repairs when those fence repairs were done. So that's forty-five plus fifty. Now you're ninety-five thousand. Legal expenses, thanks to one of our council members who keeps our legal expenses down. We're going to be thirty thousand under budget there. So, you know, you add all of this up and it's going to be about a hundred fifty to two hundred thousand under budget. And what we could do at the end of the year is we could increase our capital budget if we want to. And we could move money over to the capital funds, which right now, the cash, we only have a hundred thousand dollars. But the funds itself has been designated for four hundred and six thousand. So if we wanted to move funds over there to get that for long-term planning, if you wanted to move it up to five hundred thousand, we could do that.
Yeah, I was actually kind of reflecting on that in light of our meeting on the twenty-second for long-term capital planning. Who decides kind of what pages we're going to put into the council packet for the finance report? Because I really do have a hard time just kind of translating what you tell us to the numbers that we see on these pages.
I know. I have to tell you this. You get a lot of pages.
Yeah.
I'm happy to look at the different reports. I'm in Fund View now. I'm happy.
Okay.
I'm happy to work with you. There's some different sort of dashboards and stuff.
Yeah.
As I've started to play around with this, and there's probably a way to get a consolidated condensed report and then maybe some visual graphs.
I think what we need, I mean, I can show you what I do. Because I want a summary report myself, right? I want to see, here's the total revenue, here's the total expenses, here's the difference. And I want to see that for each fund. So that's how I
Yep. And maybe you and Matt can kind of work on that. So I think that all the council would probably benefit from having that type of summary sort of dashboard.
Well, yeah, because anything you see on Fund View, anything you see on Fund View can be put into an Excel sheet.
Yeah.
We just pulled it into Excel sheet and then we, you know, massage them.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, but I know I don't look at that report that sent down.
May I ask?
I like the idea, though.
A line item question?
Yeah.
The soccer goals. How are those supposed to be coded?
They should be a capital item.
Okay. Right now?
They are.
Well, right now I'm showing that they were popped in the new advisory commission account. So it just seems to me that's
That's just
Thank you.
I thought capital item, but I thought that's what, I never thought capital item. I thought that was, I thought that's
I think the vendor said that they can last a long time, but maybe five years, seven years.
It just exists. Yeah.
Yeah.
That'd be nuts.
Yeah.
Our budget looks a little
CPA firm always, when they come in, they pull out capital items for us and they give us expanded sheet. Yeah, that should have been capitalized. And we did have, we did have expensive these months. I thought that they could see what they said.
Some slides that have that kind of, yeah, I hate to butcher that. That was shown in the dashboard and, you know, I'm happy to put that into some slides into PowerPoint and create, you know, just a couple of summary slides.
That would be easier. Yeah. I would pay my fund you that I don't like. This is so similar. That's the way you would expect.
Approve this.
Yeah.
Alright, do we have a motion to approve the Finance Treasury Report for April twenty twenty five?
I move to approve with the modification. To the new advisory commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
All opposed, motion carries. Item seven B, discuss, consider, and take action on the Welcome Commission applications. Or do you want to go ahead and kick off item seven B?
Yeah. Here. There.
Your baby.
Our baby. So these five ladies, they, you know, I've met them all, I think. Maybe I've also met them. They are eager and friendly and they've submitted applications very expeditiously. So, yeah, I hope you guys had a chance to review the application, but I think they're going to be a great start. Starting to the
Yeah, I mean, I will note that I'm familiar and I've read that application. And these are people that have definitely given their time in the past and are incredibly just dedicated to the community broadly and all have very good reputations and have definitely contributed. So I'm very supportive of of this team.
So do we need a motion then to appoint these five people to the Welcome Commission?
That will really
We do.
Is it individual or concept?
We can, can we do it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll move the appointment of Pat Younger, Cassie Reynolds, Peggy Hatendorf, Kimberly Hoffman, and Tiffany Wilson to the Welcome Commission.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all approved. All opposed, non-motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for each of the volunteers.
Great.
Discuss, consider, and take action on Park and Recreation Commission Liaison. So who, so this is officially to change it from, because Matt was liaison. Marty has kind of taken over the role, given Matt's transfer to support, to what we'll call Assistant Treasurer for the village. Are we formally appointing you, Marty? Is that what the situation is?
I would accept.
Yeah.
I would like to motion, well, I think Marty was perfect. I would like to motion for Marty to step into this big role.
Big role pictures.
Do we have a second?
I will second.
All in, well, any, any discussion?
But I still want to work. I care a lot about the park. And I know that there was this native guardian concept. And I don't think we went advanced on that. So that money may actually still be in the budget.
Still in the budget.
But I'd like to still support in any way that I can, Marty. So.
Totally.
We'll still tag team.
Great.
You know what? One thing I wonder about the park is if we expand things, and I don't know what expansion we might have. One of the things we don't have is we don't have a place to store anything.
Oh.
So, you know.
I mean, we have Good news is Marty operates these storage
But we, I mean, we
Storage area, curious stuff.
Well, I mean, if people want to play basketball, they have to bring their own basketball. A lot of times when you go to the park, there's a place there where you can get equipment. All I need a basket. Okay. Hey, you know, soccer goals are
Soccer balls.
You know, that's right. You know, stuff like that. And I don't know where you're going to go in the future, to be honest with you. But I don't have the ideas on the park other than walking around, you can go out to the golf park. But there may be other things you want to do in the future. You don't have a storage sharing.
Not a publicly accessible one.
Good point. We have them in the closet, though. But we don't have, like, people don't have access to them.
That's a secure, that's a secure area.
Yeah, maybe I could propose to the commission to think about getting that up. It's like tough shit things. Just for bold.
There's like a bookcase, right, by the many checking in and out of your own books. I think that would be awesome to have for someone.
I'm sure the community also would donate. I mean, there's a lot of people that have
Yeah.
balls if they can.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a great idea.
Alright, all in favor of Marty Beany Park and Rec Commission Liaison? I, all opposed, non-motion carries.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations on stepping back up at the park.
And shoulders above me.
Okay. Item D. And Josh, to be clear, I have to read the entire ordinance, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Discuss. Make Angie do it.
I can do it. It's fine. Discuss, consider, and take action on adopting ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero one one and ordinance of the Village of the Hills taxes to provide for the collection of hotel occupancy tax on short-term rental property by amending section two dot zero eight dot zero six four definitions of article two dot zero eight taxation of chapter two administration and personnel. City of the Code of Ordinances, amending portions of article nine dot zero three short-term rentals of chapter nine, planning and development regulations of the Code of Ordinances by adding a new section, nine dot zero three dot zero zero three definitions, and adding a new section, nine dot zero three dot zero zero four, collection of hotel occupancy tax, providing a penalty not to exceed two thousand dollars for each offense, and a separate offense shall be deemed committed each day during or on which violation occurs or continues, providing for savings, cumulative repealer, and severability, and providing an effective date. And so basically what this does, it updates our regulations on short-term rentals and hotel occupancy within the Village of the Hills. So over the last few months, we've worked closely with the old council to address the need for greater clarity, consistency, and accountability in how short-term rentals are governed from a city regulation perspective. So this change includes permitting requirements for all short-term rental operators, updated safety and conduct standards, clarified occupancy limits, and alignment with the existing hotel occupancy tax requirements. So these updates are designed to help preserve the city residential character of our neighborhoods, protect the safety and peace of our residents, ensure that all lodging operations contribute fairly to the services and infrastructure we rely on. I do want to note that under the POA rules, short-term rentals are prohibited. This ordinance does not override or alter that prohibition. Our ordinance is aligned with the authority granted to us as a municipality, which is separate and distinct from the authority of the POA. So the community has already voted to prohibit short-term rentals through the POA. So keep this in mind when considering any rental activity in the village. So now I can ask for a motion.
I will move to pre-ordinance.
The other main thing is just that this is going to require the online listing services to collect.
Yes.
Even on illegal, even on illegal STRs, so.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yes, I will move to pre-ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero zero, zero one one.
Do we have a second? Discussion. Any questions? Yeah.
Who's the sponsor of this?
This is
Where's this coming from?
This is coming, though, you probably might have been, this is coming from our discussions around people still operating short-term rentals in the city.
Do we know that for sure?
Yes. Yeah, we had, yeah, we've had multiple violations and reports in conjunction with the POA.
Okay.
And what has been happening is they've been doing short-term rentals without any of, without following any of the currently even existing safety requirements and reporting requirements. One instance was somebody not even having, having a secondary ADU, basically, and not even having it issued a certificate of occupancy and even permitted from, full permitted from the POA to have that property even occupied in the first place. So this is all recent. We've discussed with Josh, the legal remedies we have in terms of a city you know, pursuing our current regulations and enforcing our regulations. And there's some stuff that needs to get clarified and just definitionally changed, as well as we have the ability to require, you know, VBRO to report, for example, VBR to report their listings and collect taxes on our behalf.
Yeah, so right now we have a registration scheme for short-term rentals, as I understand it. And we have information that people have violated that registration.
Yes.
And what have we done about that?
This is, so do we send out notices?
Send out, there was three violations. We sent out certified letters to those residents and regular mail as well, so they could make sure they got them. And so far as we can tell, they've stopped.
Stop what?
Renting. Renting through Verbo and Airbnb. They're not listing Airbnb.
Okay. Do I just? Is this really a problem?
So I believe as further explanation, the purpose of modifying and amending this ordinance or many old ordinance and adding this one is to supply this to the vendors, such as VRBO, Airbnb, as and they will have this on file as a requirement for them to submit to us the taxes. So it's an additional layer of notification should the short-term rentals be happening without any awareness.
And then if they are happening, which they were happening, I mean, as a city, it's kind of our obligation. I mean, they're basically committing tax evasion. I mean, they're not paying any taxes, that's where the state of taxes, they're required to remit to the state of taxes, they remit it back to us. So if we are, if they are doing it, we shouldn't be allowed to collect the taxes or owe to us.
We don't get the state's six percent, do we?
We get a portion of the hotel tax, though.
Oh, do we?
I think we do. Yeah.
How much do we get?
Six to seven percent, depending. I can't remember what your ordinance says, but
For tax? Oh, 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 for this order?
For the hotel occupancy tax. That's already, you already have a hot ordinance.
Right, I know.
Yeah. But yeah, you should be getting your seven percent. The other thing that, based on y'all's direction at the last meeting, was we're requiring the online listing services to put the registration number on their, on the listing. And it makes it illegal for them to list it without the registration number, so.
Well, one of the issues was there was a gentleman who's leasing without using one of the services, right? It was just like
He sold. Yeah. But that would require, I mean, that's tough to enforce. But yeah, there's somebody that has multiple multiple townhouses that leases them out.
Yeah, short-term rentals.
And one's up for sale.
It just struck me that we have a registration scheme, and if we have people who aren't following it and we're not doing anything about it, and the POA already prohibits them, so we're not supposed to have short-term rentals. What do we need this for? That's really my fundamental question.
And my application is just what Josh had said.
Yeah.
And why I want to see it go forward is that it's an added layer of notification to the city that somebody is attempting to do a short-term rental.
But only if people follow the ordinance. And why would we assume that they would?
We're assuming that they're not. So when they go to file on VRBO, Airbnb, et cetera, they are also going to be a tool to then send them back to us to say, you need your registration number. And in that case, then they'll have to come through the city process and go down that avenue.
Can we do that with the current registration regime, or do we have to have a hot tax?
They're not coming to us in the first place to register. So, but they're going online to register because they want to list their place for rental. So the online rental places will then require that they have our registration number, which they will not have until they've gone through our process.
Yeah, we can't. As a city, we can't. We would, if we attempted to stop, and you're probably familiar, I mean, if we attempted to more restrict or ban the short-term rentals, we would not be able to do that. So if we are, have an ordinance that allows to do in the first place and we are not being and they're not following the rules anyways, we can require, as a city, one of our levers can be to require VRBO to be more stringent with regard to their reporting and tax collection.
But they won't do it without these
But they wouldn't
additional amendments.
Yeah, so that's the issue. They won't, VRBO won't do it, obviously, unless we tell them they have to do it.
We can't just amend the registration, the current registration regime to impose that requirement on the online.
We have it already. It is already on our ordinance.
No, but that's what this ordinance does. The ordinance requires the
This ordinance imposes a tax.
No, we already have a tax.
Tax is already existing. We're just making the online listing services collect it at the time that they make a booking reservation. And we're making them, and we're making the, we're making the owner provide the registration information to the online listing services in order to list a property, which they can't.
We're not doing any of the seven percent that we can do as a municipality.
It's already part of your ordinance. We didn't amend that part.
Okay.
It's just existing. This is a mechanism that should either allow us to collect it easier or to have, if people want to do it and then get to this point, they're like, oh, I don't want to do this, so I don't want the city, or
Yeah, and let me, let me back up. You already have the hotel.
Yeah.
Right, but we never defined short-term rentals as part of our
It's part of, it is, it's in, it's in the hotel definition, in my view. I think it's enough to cover
It wasn't before. It is under this proposed ordinance.
We tweaked it, but I think that the hotel definition, the broad hotel definition is, would cover an STR. But you guys also have the health and safety requirements for the registration piece. So we strengthened all those. And then we just added the registration requirement to be provided to the online listing services. And we made VRBO and Airbnb collect that Just added the registration requirement, um, to be provided to the online listing services, and we made V R B O and Airbnb collect that. Tax at the time that they do the booking.
So you're saying that we've always had, we've already had, currently have a seven percent hot tax on short-term rentals?
I cannot remember what the number is, but yes, it's like six or seven percent.
I'm just looking at it, um.
Because we're modifying the definition of hotel to include short-term rentals now, which it did not include before. So how would we be able to impose the hot tax on short-term rentals in the past?
I think it included the definition. The definition that y'all use in your ordinance is the same hotel definition that. Most cities use, and it could cover S T R, it could cover somebody renting a room in their house.
Well, I'm just, I'm, I'm thinking of the state statute, which was amended in twenty fifteen to. Make short-term rentals a part of the definition of a hotel. But it added specifically the term short-term rental, and we never did that. I assume because we didn't have any short-term rentals, but whatever the reason is, we've not had that part, that definition in the past.
There's always been issue, well, I will, there's, I mean, there's always been issues with short-term rentals. And that's why they brought it to the P O A to vote against it. Whether, whether people in the, in the past were effective at. Collecting hotel, collecting hotel tax, which we believe. Based on the definition, which we could look at or have Josh evaluate whether included short-term rentals or not. I don't know how effective people in the past were in collecting tax. My perspective is if, if people were doing. Short-term rentals and it fit within the definition of the hotel, they should have been remitting, remitting tax on. On a short-term rental.
But I guess, Mayor, that's my problem.
Yeah.
Didn't, the definition did not, or does not now include. Short-term rentals within the definition of hotel in our ordinance. We're amending the ordinance to incorporate short-term rentals into that definition, but historically, that's not been the case.
So, right, what we're doing.
So we're imposing a new tax, and that's what I'm concerned about.
Occupancy tax. So I'm on our ordinance. E code and under hotel occupancy tax, the definition of hotel. Is this kind of going down the right path?
I think.
Is any building or buildings in which the public may, for a consideration, obtain sleeping accommodations, including hotels, motels. Tourist homes, houses of ports, tourist ports, lodging houses and rooming houses, bed and breakfast establishments. Or other buildings where rooms are furnished for a consideration. But not including hospitals, sanatoriums, or nursing homes, dormitories, or other housing provided by higher education institutions. Pretty all encompassing.
I didn't hear short-term rental. That's my concern. But now, if you want, you know, my.
What's the difference between a short-term rental and a, a house with lodging made for sleeping?
Or furnished rent availability. Now, this, this is, yeah, your perspective, I mean.
I don't know the difference.
The, the definition we had is the definition that used to be in the state law until twenty fifteen. When the legislature amended it specifically to include the phrase, this includes short-term rentals by name.
So should we change the ordinance and put in this?
My, I, I, what I would prefer is let's do the registration piece, but. I don't want to impose a new tax. If we're already getting the six percent that's coming into the state through the controller's office. I don't want to impose a new tax, particularly on a use that's, uh, not permitted in our neighborhood anyway. Me, that seems kind of silly.
Well, is there language?
Well, Josh, so Josh, based on your legal. Was historically where short-term rent, whatever you want to call short-term rentals, which I think kind of came into popularity, it's. Probably twenty fifteen in terms of the nomenclature, the legal definition previously included. Now we're just saying, we're clarifying. For certainty that, hey, by the way, this does include short-term rentals, is how I would think about it.
Yeah, I agree with you. And again, the added, the added.
Does not.
The added collection obligations on the short-term listing was. The direction you gave us to provide additional disincentives for people to do things that they're not already allowed to do anyway.
Yeah.
And so. That's why we draft.
And in the past, the short-term rentals best based on the definition would have fallen under. The requirement to collect hotel occupancy tax, even based on the prior definition.
Yeah, my view, cities enforce that under the old definition also. But we did clarify and added a backend. With this, with this change.
So I see, so my understanding is what you're, I, I think, and you can clarify, what you're saying is. That was not necessarily included previously within the definition, and then. It was amended. Our, our ordinance historically did not include then, short-term rentals, as your perspective on the read of that. So now thereby including it, I see what you're saying, would thereby including it would be. A new quote-unquote tax. So that really hinges on the definition.
Only if, only if there's precedent that. A place that you're renting for lodging to sleep that's furnished. Is not a short-term rental, and it's something entirely different.
I agree.
And I struggle to understand that difference. Other than at some point someone said, let's call it something. By definition, and I think the intent of a place for lodging that you can rent to stay in with a bed. I don't, I can't separate that from what a short-term rental is.
Why don't we just include the language from two thousand fifteen and go?
Yeah, I think it's not about.
Well, because then, in my judgment, uh, Rick, we're imposing a new tax on, yeah. Lees. Residents in our, and by the way, if we ever collect the tax, I don't know what we can do with the money. Because the money is earmarked for specific and very limited purposes, none of which appear to exist in this community to me.
We discussed that before in previous councils, I remember, about how to use it for events, et cetera.
Well, we can use it for events that promote tourism. We can't use it for events that benefit our neighborhood. That's the problem. I don't think we can do anything with the money if we collected it.
Shouldn't be collecting much.
And Mayor, I'll just say, so when they amended, the legislature did clarify that the. Definition of hotel includes a short-term rental, but I don't know that that was necessarily a change versus a clarification, but.
I think, yeah, I think this kind of hinges off, and this is your point, it kind of, I think, and again, I'm not going to speak for you, but it kind of depends on the definition of hotels, like. Is, because you're, it's not a new tax if it was included previously. I agree with you. Why, why do a new tax?
Mm-hmm.
Just for the sake of a tax.
Yeah, the, the definition we currently have for a hotel in our hotel occupancy tax ordinance. Is the same definition as in state law. In the tax code. And that definition was amended in state law in twenty fifteen to say. For purposes of this chapter, the term hotel includes a short-term rental. In this subsection, a short-term rental means the rental of all or part of a residential. Property to a person who is not a permanent resident. So. I guess where I am is the, the legislature apparently felt that short-term rentals were not included in the definition that we currently use. And so I'm not in favor of adding a new tax to anybody that doesn't, didn't already exist. But I do think that it's, it's a good idea if we can get the, uh, the online booking companies. To, uh, help us with the registration process. That's in our current ordinance. We should do that. I just don't think we need to impose a tax on them to do that.
Lee, could you read that again?
Yeah.
Or clarification?
That section I circled is what was added in twenty fifteen.
In my mind, they added that as a clarification. It wasn't a.
A change. I mean, is there, we don't even, we don't have to vote on this right now. I think I would like some more. I would like, and I appreciate, I do appreciate, I would like, like more information. Um. I would like more information.
There was a.
Uh, that was Greg's, I'll talk about it in a second. I would just like more information on support around whether it's a clarification or an addition.
Yeah, is there any precedent where like, there's a, a case law or like. Is there any precedent that actually separates the whole definition from not?
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, that's what I would like more information on. I think it hinges on a definition and support around whether it was a clarification or a change.
I follow the point. I mean, I'll look at, I can look at the legislative history, but the previous definition was. Hotel means a building in which members of the public obtain sleeping accommodations for consideration. So that was the first definition, um, in the tax code for the hotel occupancy tax. But I don't know. I don't know what the legislative history is on that.
I didn't.
The, the provision that, uh. Lee's referencing, and so that's important to y'all. We can.
I think we, for, I think that it's kind of the crux of the discussion. I mean, that kind of makes a big impact on what. That I agree.
Yeah, the, the principle is. You know, on the surface, not raised, not having a new tax. I get, I get the argument. But I don't have an issue with any language. I think it's.
It just, it seems strange to me for us to impose a tax on something that's prohibited in our neighborhood.
And I think, well, that.
Undecentable.
And I, yeah, that's, that's, I want clarification on whether we're. Imposing a new tax or enforcing a tax that should have been enforced the entire time.
In the.
I think that.
Matter. Thanks.
Yeah, and I want, I'm just saying, it's in a kind, I mean, he's, I get his, he's saying it's a clarification or it's a change. I mean, there's. A difference, and I don't think anybody wants a new tax for just to do this, but I agree that if. If it's, if somebody, if somebody in the past had, um.
Yeah.
Not enforced a tax, uh, that was valid and already in place, I think that that's. You know, something, a different discussion.
And I'll just say too, the registration fees for short-term rentals that are in our current ordinance.
Yep.
Those are not hotel occupancy taxes, so we can use those for general revenue purposes.
Okay.
But the hot tax, we have to set over to the side, and as I say, I don't see any way to expend it.
Yeah, so Greg and.
What we have now, we can actually, if we generate any revenue off of it through registration. We can use that for any municipal purpose.
Yeah. So, and then Greg, based on his past experience when he was on there, I don't know if you can read up there, but he said.
I can't.
Yeah, it's a little hazy. Um, he said the prior council adopted a tax with the full intent to collect it, and we cleared. That the money can be used for park events, which are necessarily open to the general public. Not, as Lee said, for the benefit of the community. It's that it was a tax imposed. Just not collected because the P O A vote happened a few months later.
Makes sense. Those are, we don't restrict those events only to.
Other open to the public, yeah.
How does the public get in? I'm sorry.
Yeah, there's, there's.
Some of the best from gay, all at all.
Yeah, yeah. Quite a few, actually, non-residents members of Lakeview.
Yeah, and we did one year. I mean, we had a parking at the school, and then we brought, um, golf carts and bringing people.
We did that at the recent event, too.
I know.
Well, I mean, if you, if the council wants to move on the item, I'm, I'm not going to move that we postponed. I've just, those are my concerns.
Like me, Mayor, to withdraw my motion.
Uh, yeah.
I will withdraw my motion, please, Mr. G.
Because we're going to decide if we want clarification on that.
And this is my fault, I think, for missing the April meetings, but, uh, this one kind of hit me cold, Frank.
Yeah, if you weren't aware of what's going on. Uh, there's, there was, there was a whole string of, of recent incidences that I think while you were unable to attend the last winters.
So let's see, so our. Okay. How far can we go back and collect taxes then?
It's a material number. It's very material.
If it's a misdemeanor, it's to your statute. I don't know about tax penalties. Anyway. That, that's all I have to say on that. Thank you.
Sounds great. Thanks for the input. All right. We can add this back on to the agenda for another time once we get some more information.
I'm, I'm so sorry, Mayor. Would you let me ask one more?
Yes, sir.
Uh, do we have any information from the P O A about what they're doing? To enforce their ban on.
Yeah.
Short-term rentals.
We've been, so, so Angie and Denise were closely on coordinating. Um, one is who's violating what, and then sending out their respective notifications. P O A being a reminder that you're not allowed to do it. Ours being, hey, by the way, you need to follow our. Safety and registration standards if you are going to do it.
Okay.
So there's a, it's kind of, um. Both are sharing information regarding violation, just sending out notices. What we've done is, we, I mean, obviously, we haven't. Find anyone or done anything or made an attempt to collect any. Registration fees or taxes for the people that we've had violations, but we have done those. Attempted to set up a meeting. Uh, between Rick and Angie, I was tied up at the time between one of the violators, and then. He just didn't show up, and then they, they subsequently removed listings, which is, I think from our perspective. Fine at this point.
Yeah, I think once they saw the deadly fine, they figured out, I don't want, I don't want to talk about this. Because it would have been a lot of money.
And has the P O A fined anybody for violating a rule?
Did send out, uh, their P O A violations to each one of them as well. It's just a friendly reminder the first time that they're not allowed.
Okay, so no, no fines.
No fines.
The P O A fine is only fifty dollars.
We'll make it in the rain. P O A fine.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to business item. Seven E. Discuss, consider and take action on adopting the ordinance number twenty, twenty twenty-five dash zero twelve. And ordinance of the city council for Village of the Hills Texas declaring certain conditions of property and junk vehicle to be. Public nuisances, establishing procedures for nuisance abatement and removal by amending chapter seven, health and sanitation. Of the Code of Ordinances and adding a new vehicle eight point zero four. Article eight point zero four, to be entitled junk vehicles to chapter eight offenses and additional provisions to the Code of Ordinances. The Village of the Hills, providing a severability clause, providing a repealer clause, providing a savings clause, providing for a penalty not to exceed two thousand. Dollars for each offense and a separate offense shall be deemed committed each day during or on which a violation occurs or continues. And, and establishing an effective date. I think this is, um. Basically designed to empower code enforcement, officials enforcement, provide residents with a structured approach to. Resolving issues that affect our communal living arrangement. Um, I mean, it's pretty cut and dry, provides for the specific actions and conditions, consider nuisances. Outline the process for addressing and abating such nuisances and setting forth penalties for violations to ensure compliance.
May I go ahead and move it? I will have some amendments to it. I may have to approve ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash zero one two.
For the second.
A second discussion.
Um, my discussion is the. Titling of the, um, new article. I feel like they saw the summary of the document.
Mm-hmm.
It's more than just junked vehicles.
I agree.
So I think it should be entitled public nuisances. Um, or of something of similar severity. And so it actually remove. Anywhere where it says, you know, the title of the ordinance and junk vehicle. Um, and retitle that, one of my modifications. Um, this has an overview for. Those who are not reading it, it is to include unsightly properties. Um. Including weeds and waste, but not. Like with anything that the P O A already. Is covering. Um. In the. Second, the third where, or fourth whereas. Um. It states, whereas such overgrowth can harbor rodents, insects, or other pests, posing a potential threat to public health and safety. Um, I'd like to add, and can damage city infrastr, infrastructure. I apologize, I don't have the page numbers, but. Under article seven point zero eight, additional authority to abate dangerous weeds. A one. Forty-eight inches is taller than I want to take action. Um.
That's state law.
State law.
Okay.
But that's different than the, that doesn't mean you have to wait till it gets to forty. But that's different than the, that doesn't mean you have to wait till it gets to forty eight inches. That's just a separate. I think that's forfeit and I I.
What I thought too, I think that that was a trial, but.
I I I tend to think that that's excessive progress.
But that's state law. We have enough, there's another statement in there, um. Which is what I was reflecting, the vegetation is at.
I mean, the P O A would clean up properties. Sold, sell the house until P O A got the money back. I don't know if they're still doing that.
I think they are.
Okay, because I guess the house on Hills Drive. That's unkempt and. I mean, the resident saying they're mowing.
It may be it uh unconfirmed, but it may have been that previous document deceased and there's also a pool in the back that's.
Yeah, the accident died.
No, so that one, the P O A, the P O A hits historic because that was a while ago. The P O A. Was mowing and charging. I think they collected when it sells. It was on a, that house was on a reverse mortgage, so the principal keeps increasing and then once the person deceased. The fam, there's no value to the family, so they literally set stop contacting us and they walked away. So now it wait, I think now the bank put a notice on the door if anybody was interested. And, you know, putting in an offer, they're gonna have to do whatever they do through their foreclosure process. So that one's still staying there. I do think some people go over there and take care of it, but I know the P O A has been. Also maintaining it, so. That's like. Yeah, like fifteens, it's like in the fifties, I think. It's there's like a kind of in, it's like right across. If you go past the gate, it'll be, you'll see it. It's a nice, it's a very nice house. That sounds right. Yeah.
And is it, is this also an item kind of carryover from last month? I I missed the conversation on this one too.
This is a combination of a few situations. One is. I think we should get something separate for littering, just for clarification. There's a lot of trash. Then there's been just some general complaints around houses like this situation. Um, and then the junk vehicle situation, uh. The club has some vehicles that are broken down that they had dumped on to property. Within the city but owned by the mud that they have not moved. So there's, and that's been staying there for for months.
I think it's beneficial that we have this tool to oversee both our residential and our commercial occupants.
Also includes public donation and a bunch of other things that we've gotten complaints about.
And brush, there there's an area um of down of dry dead wood and. You know, as we approach.
Fire season.
Yeah, it would just be terrible if if, you know, cigarette butt ignited a a fire in the neighborhood. So I think it's really important that we. Also focus on uncontrollable brush.
Can can we enforce something that's on the hills property? Are you allowed to do that? I'm wondering because I know the P O A, we couldn't do anything for those.
Yeah, they're not, yeah, because they're not members of the P O A.
Yes, with this we could.
It's it's it sounds like we think some of this would uh would affect the um. The 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 club because they own some vehicles that would fall within the junk vehicle.
Yes.
Article.
Yeah.
There's also some areas of land, the pond up to the north and. You know, on like one side of the pond, um, you know, by the dam. If you're closer to the club, you know, the club's position is, well, that side is our golf course, but then. There's the other side of the pond. And, you know, I I think there's going to need to be a mutual benefit or mutual interest to go clean up the other side of that pond, but. What happens when trash, you know, washes through the. The water system uh into the community residents on the other side of that pond. That's that's something that was brought to our attention.
Yeah, I remember that.
Additional some landscaping that's. Impeding our walking trail and I think it's might end up causing a lot of damage to it.
Although, so part of this was unlawful for any owner, occupant, agent, or other person that controlled premises to allow rubbish, including. Newsletters for this is standard listing, stoves, furniture, tires, appliances, trash, garbage, refuse, junk, and debris to collect on such premises. So a lot of, a lot of, some of the complaints that we're getting is there's. Trash from the cloud, it's washing to the waterway.
Residents through downstream.
Yes. Have we kind of visited with the club about that?
We have a meeting actually on Thursday.
Okay.
But yeah, Angie's worked, talked to.
Eddie Martinez.
Landscaping supervisor. I think he's a landscaping supervisor on a couple of locations to help resolve some of these issues.
And there's a couple of places where there's some vines and it. I don't, I don't even know whose land it may be on and it may.
Yeah.
Some of it's on the other side of our fence on the south side of the neighborhood. So I don't know if it's Lake Way, if it's the club, but it could impact our community if one of these trees, there's a large tree with a lot of fire.
It's basically dead.
It's it's dying, it's dead. If it were to come down, it could hypothetically fall on our road, take out our fence and so. We need to, I think we need to take a number of steps here.
Yeah, and I just, I I. I'd be reluctant to start any type of enforcement action against the club unless and until we would have an opportunity to visit with them about the concerns. And point out to them what the compliance is. Just like, just like we would with any resident.
Exactly, yeah.
Great point and and.
They usually, sometimes they don't do things, but if you bring it up to them, they.
Exactly, yeah.
And I don't know that it's it's about, you know, who's paying for it as much as it is about. Finding defining who's going to take care of it, who's contractors are actually going to go out and do it and maybe we find a way to. To share in the cost if it's our contractors or theirs or members.
Well, because trees, they have tree people here almost all the time, so. PGA Golf Academy, they, you know, trees are. But they don't do a noise at all because nobody goes there. One of the catalysts for the meeting on Thursday was uh by where we live on sixteen, there's some dead grass area. And the club said they don't have irrigation. And so their option would be to nature out of it. But then their fear is people complain about dead grass, like long dead grass. So they're kind of like, you know, so you guys tell us what we want to do, what we should do. On Thursday will be.
Pretty much how it happens.
Our side and Joel from the P O A is going to come too.
Okay, okay.
And on on the south side of Lake Hurst Creek, um. You know, the very south side of the of the water system there, um. I don't know whose land it would be directly offsetting the road as you get down into the ditch and then as you get into. The creek that actually runs through the golf course, so there's probably some areas where you may all look at it and say. Where's that line?
Oh, we've looked into that with the dam.
Yeah.
It's very clearly laid out. Earl has documentation of it.
Over on the south side by Hurst Creek. Not on the north, on over by uh Lake Flint Rock.
Oh, oh, that creek.
Yeah, on the Hills Drive, it's like you're going down the Hills Drive.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's.
I moved.
What? Yes.
Yeah.
Who seconded this?
Did anyone second this?
Do you approve my amendments?
Yes, yes, as approved by your amendments, yes.
Any other questions or discussion before we?
I just wanted to, um, to clarify on the uh, you didn't like the title of the junk vehicle.
I was too heavy on junk vehicles and not enough on nuisance.
Yeah, I think when you file it as an ordinance, it should be public nuisance.
That is just separate to junk vehicles. All the rest is, the other part is the nuisance. Junk vehicles are also nuisance, but.
It's a. It's a section of it, but I don't feel like the entire article is junked vehicles.
So article eight point oh four will be called just nuisances.
Public nuisance or?
Public nuisance.
Well, was the previous, well, I guess it's adding. So uh, so I was introduced for nuisance abatement. Amending chapter seven and then adding.
Article eight.
Yeah, so I mean, it kind of, it kind of has to, it has to lay out that addition though.
Yeah, and it's 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 also.
Yeah. We have nothing, okay.
That's why I think I need to say public nuisance.
Is there liter, is that one of those things that says on file or is we literally just have nothing and health, safety? Or health and sanitation? Yeah, because it's observed. By amending chapter seven should be procedure for nuisance abatement. Because I see if if it's, I mean, it is amending and it is adding junk vehicle, but it's adding everything.
Yeah.
Adding a definition of even nuisance.
So this will add to both chapter seven and chapter eight of the city code then, right?
New article eight.
Eight oh four.
Additional, yeah.
I think that's, that's a good change. Call it just public nuisance.
Well, the only reason we call it that and a lot of cities do is because junk vehicles is called out in the in the state law and so. And it's very specific about what we have to do with junk vehicles and so that's the recommendation that we we make. I mean, I'm happy to change the. Um, but I'll do what you say regardless, but I mean, my recommendation would be that we. Keep junk vehicles as this, as the subcategory and if we need to change the um, the main title. We're happy to do that. Um, just trying to find it here and make sure I understand what we.
Yeah, for the way we can alleviate the.
That's what you want.
Observation that it looks very heavy to junk vehicles, which is not a huge issue.
I think. Under health and sanitation, chapter seven. New articles should be titled public nuisance. If you need to also include and junked vehicles, I would be okay with that as well.
So I may have misunderstood, Sarah. I was thinking that the. Article eight point oh four, what we're calling public nuisance or now junk vehicles. I was thinking that that would amend. Uh, or that would um amend chapter eight.
The offenses and.
Yeah, rather than chapter seven.
Right, so we need.
So we got part of this proposed ordinance goes to amend or add to chapter seven of the city code and part of it. Adds to chapter eight of the city code, the way I'm hearing it.
That's what I.
Okay.
For chapter eight offenses. It can be listed junk vehicles, I. But I think it also should include public nuisance.
Well, article eight does declare junk vehicles a nuisance as well.
Yes.
And article seven. Is adding the definition of nuisances. Period. We just thought it was a more logical place to start because most of those nuisances are health and sanitation, but.
Yeah.
It's still in trying to, do you just want chapter eight to be nuisances and then under that we will. Put junk vehicles as well.
Well, I believe.
The brush and weeds.
We need chapter seven first, actual health and sanitation standards.
Right. You're not saying you disagree with uh, wait, it's like you're just disagreeing with emphasis on junk vehicles for.
Correct, for the. For the purpose of. Understanding, yeah.
When I go. It kind of seemed, I guess, because like if you're thinking, I think the way it's laid out is kind of like, and I agree, I think because it's very heavy on junk vehicles in terms of.
Tiling it.
Titled it.
Yeah.
So I wonder, but it's kind of like, it says. Declaring certain conditions of property and junk vehicles and by forgetting between the two, because your junk vehicle could also be. So I think that's why they probably have it separate and I don't disagree with you fully, but I'm wondering if it's because junk vehicle. Well, it's probably because junk vehicles can also be parked not on your property on the street. For a prolonged period of time, so it's kind of a separate call out.
Right, but if I'm gonna get, if I'm gonna get a city violation for high weeds and it comes in as junk vehicle, I'm gonna go like, that's not, you know, like.
Can we, can we just call it ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero twelve and ordinance of the city council for the Village of the Hills? Texas declaring certain conditions to be public nuisances. I don't know if conditions then is the right word, but something and then just then retaining the rest of it.
Well, no.
Okay, I don't understand. I'm sorry. I don't understand why if you get something for weeds and high grass or. Or why you get a junk vehicle, you're, you would think that it's related to weeds and grass. I mean, they're going to be separate. They're gonna be.
Not how I'm reading it and the title at all. Of this ordinance.
So we're amending chapter seven and we're adding a new chapter, a new article eight point oh four, junk vehicles to offenses. So it's gonna be. So I guess seven is what doesn't have anything, right? Sorry, I can't pull it up.
Right.
So we're gonna add chapter seven for general nuisances related to health and sanitation. And then arti, and then article, then we're amending and creating a new article eight point oh four, which is just going to deal with. Junk vehicles because it creates a new offense for that. Because that's the way state law, and I'm sorry if I, it sounds like I did not, this was not clear and I apologize for that, but. There are two, going to be two separate sections. So if you get a junk vehicle. Citation or violation, it's going to refer to the new eight point oh four, which will have all of the elements followed by required by state law.
All other public nuisances that are mentioned in there. Be in chapter eight as well, or will they apply from chapter seven?
Well, both, the junk vehicle will be, will be a nuisance as well.
Yeah.
But all the rest of it will be, um, all the rest of the nuisances are in the new seven. So in the case of weeds, you would have a violation related to health, safety, environment in chapter seven.
As a junk vehicle, that's chapter eight.
Yeah. Although technically it would be both. You would, you would, yeah. But if there's something about the. If you want us to make, I mean, we can obviously add to the preamble for section, you know, eight point oh four. I mean, we can clarify to make sure that that.
Yeah, it's purely what it is. I think that's, that's purely what it is. It's not. Yeah.
So for the structure of the proposed ordinance, um. On the second page of the the document, you say at the top, section two amendments. And two point one says, chapter seven of the code is hereby amended as follows, and then that goes on. Through kind of the bottom of page six. I thought would be at a. There, like before, article eight point oh four, have a new section two point two that says. Uh, chapter eight of the city code is amended by adding the following section eight point oh four.
Okay. It does have a two point two there, electronic version, the printed version may not have had that.
Wait, oh, there it is, there it is. We've already got it, it's just, okay, let me go over here. Never mind, we got it.
All right.
And I kind of, I see. Um, counselor's point about calling that article eight point oh four junk vehicles. Because it seems like eight point oh four deals only with junk vehicles, doesn't it?
No.
Only because of the title above it, but then inside of the.
Does it? Okay.
Well, no, I mean, that's, that's right because they point, I mean, it should be separate.
Yeah.
Because we have to follow the separate.
Right.
Procedures.
Because as I'm seeing it, maybe I'm missing it, man, but.
It's just there's the, there's the health and, the health and sanitation, which is chapter seven, which is. Bunch of the gross stuff. And then um, the separate junk vehicles are going chapter eight because that's seems to be the appropriate section for it. So we're. Basically establishing chapter seven and then I'm adding chap, adding to chap article eight with junked vehicles.
That's a brand new, okay.
I just want to make sure when it gets published, it's, everything's in the right place.
Yeah, exactly.
And it looks like we've got it.
I think it's in the right place. I think it was. No, the titling for clarification of what, I think it also happens to be that to add a junk vehicle.
I mean, do you want me to say junked vehicles prohibited? I mean. On the title of eight point four or anything we want to add, is is that unclear?
I'm not even, just based on.
It was just.
I think based on the two ordinances being together, I think it's, it's just, I guess, I think the issue was it just looks like we're passing the ordinance, it just looks like we're passing a ha- junked vehicle ordinance as opposed to establishing a health and sanitation code of ordinances. It just happens to be that we're also establishing or adding to the chapter eight junked vehicles, which with just the nature of having to call it out separately adds half of the ordinance title.
It does.
It's actually buried in eight. So thanks for not wasting a bunch of people having it all about.
Yeah.
You can think of what was relevant.
So you want, always fine with as is.
Yeah.
So second as, as it's written?
Yes, if I'm understanding correctly, maybe.
All the question. Yep. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Right.
All opposed, none, motion carries.
Thanks to the authors for your work on this. It's terrific.
Very important.
Okay, um, we have our public hearing regarding our fire code. Josh, do I need to vote to adjourn the regular city council? So we have item F. Do I need to vote to have a vote to adjourn and then go into public hearing?
No, you just read the item and then open the public hearing, note the time for the record.
Okay.
Leave it open for thirty seconds and.
Yeah.
Um, and if there's no comment, just close it, note the time and then you can move into the.
Vote on it?
Yeah.
Okay, alright. Item F, public hearing. Um, discuss and consider take action on adopting ordinance number twenty twenty five dash thirteen ordinance of the village of the hills, Texas adopting the twenty twenty one international fire code with local amendments, amendments by amending chapter six, fire code of the code of ordinances providing for enforcement, providing for a penalty not to exceed two thousand dollars for each offense and a separate offense shall be deemed committed each day during or on which a violation occurs and continue or continues, providing a repealer clause, providing a severability clause, providing for publication and providing an effective date. It is now ten thirty five AM. We'll move into the public hearing portion of the meeting. Do we have any public comments on the adoption of the twenty twenty one international fire code?
Would you call the time there?
I did, ten thirty.
I'm sorry.
Yep.
Good.
Okay, hearing none. It is ten thirty seven. Uh, this adjourns our public hearing. We'll move back into our regular city council meeting to discuss, consider and take action on adopting the ordinance as previously stated.
I move to approve ordinance number twenty twenty five dash zero one three.
Do we have a second? Is that.
Second. Okay, you got it? Okay, okay.
You, you said it. I just put my hand down, alright.
Alright, and just for the community's reference, this is our standard fire code that LTFR has adopted and it's, this really just aims to enhance the community's safety standard by incorporating the latest fire prevention and safety protocols from the twenty twenty one international fire code. It designates the fire marshal office of Travis County Emergency Services District number six, as we all reference as LTFR. As the authority responsible for enforcing the fire code within our village and establishes clear enforcement mechanisms and penalties for non-compliance to ensure adherence to the fire safety regulations. Um, alright, I mean, that's, I don't know if anybody wants, has any questions or discussions. Alright, move to a, uh, all in favor?
Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yes.
The ordinance was supposed to have in the first paragraph, um, adoption of the, by the Travis County Emergency Services District number six is shown on exhibit A. You're just going to attach it. Clarity, so you could make that amendment, yeah.
Move to approve the ordinance as amended by council?
By adding the fire code, um.
By adding the fire code amendments?
The S D number six. It's acceptable.
Okay.
And, and that'll just attach the actual.
Yes, yeah. We started to include it, but it became too cumbersome and it's just easier to, um, adopt it as an exhibit.
So that, that would be where residents could go and look at.
We kept on file with the city secretary and you can probably put that one online also. I would do that.
Cool.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor? I all opposed, none, motion carries. Uh, item G, discuss, consider and take action to approve the contract with the clean space for lawn maintenance throughout the hills. Angie, there's a couple different.
Yes, there's one for one year and one for two years. And what else to law?
And then, I guess, there's actually, there's.
Four.
Cause that, and it's each of those with or without chemical or ingredients.
Yes.
I do feel like the chemical applications are necessary for any weed control. For defining purposes.
Yeah, I mean, I think that in my perspective, especially, because they, I guess, one question is right now they're doing, do we have our contract with or without chemi- it's with chemical now.
It's with chemicals now, yes.
And what was the current, our current annual or monthly cost?
We're paying, we're paying about fifty eight hundred dollars a month. So I'm looking at this contract. I have a lot of questions.
Yes.
Exactly. Um, what are we getting extra?
Well, we added, uh, last, well, we should be paying around seven than a thousand bucks a time.
Well, for mowing and maintenance, we're paying fifty eight thousand, right?
I thought it was more because we added the section for.
The dust thing, we added that, and that was about twelve hundred.
Yeah.
So that was about seven thousand.
Yeah.
So now you're going up to eighty three hundred.
Yeah, they said it was going up to, uh, a sixty percent.
Was it just a seventy percent?
I know, that's where I was questioning them. They're supposed to get back with me on that.
Yeah, can we, do we have? I like how they laid this out with the quantity, the visits, the sections. And they, I don't know if anybody has this readily available, but just so we can compare what it was previously to what it is now. Cause that did, and I saw the four different ones, but it just, in terms of an absolute number, just kind of stuck out and I just wanted to be clear.
We can start using it for a lot of other.
Yeah.
They fix the irrigation when they have these trees. But we went from mowing and maintenance to, um, we, the clean space.
Yeah, because they've got, they've got.
Credit for one thing, every time they go out to check everything out, we get photos.
They do a great job of, of.
Ten percent, well, this worked, I think it's done more than a thing. Yeah, if you want, I mean, we can have a meeting.
Yeah.
I, I would like to be involved in that. I'm curious what, uh, post-emergent herbicides are putting down and wearing stuff. Um, I'd be curious about that.
So what Angie said something, yeah, which is good.
Uh, I, I can probably make it work. I'm not traveling in the next ten days. So I can probably make it work pretty flexible. But I would like to dig into some of the line items and.
Yeah.
And compare last year's contracts.
It's a big difference. I mean, it's the first thing I notice is going more and more. And can understand signing a contract with somebody who's done exactly the same thing, but if they're expanding us, I'm not sure if we should be looking.
But that's fair.
Yeah.
As a form just procedure.
Yeah, it's a big contract.
It's a big contract.
Very big contract.
The thing, the thing about this contract though is, tell me anything correctly, it's, they're in the, they're in the front, right? So there are vendors that you don't have to bid against them. They're, they're recognized by the government and accepted by the government, so.
Believe me, anybody shouldn't look. I've actually called them and I said, looking for a new residential landscaping company and they said, we don't do residential, we only do commercial, so.
I will, on behalf of working with now four different landscaping vendors in my time as city council, clean scapes, I just want to generally say that they've been by far the best company.
Yeah.
Leaves and bounds.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, so I'd be very committed to change events. It's just a little bit of a cost because I feel like there is some, there's an immense amount of value in them actually showing up, doing the job and then communicating the things that need to get done.
You don't have to thank people. So we'd like this.
Right, yeah.
See, I would just like, I would just like to be clear on, I agree with you one hundred percent and their reporting is very, very good and they're always, I mean, they, I mean, they got a call from Angie to come out and fix the wads the dog spout and they just came out and fixed it for free and that's not even part of their deal. Um, so I think they've added a lot of value to the community. I, I just want to be clear on what, I just want to be clear on what we're, I just want to understand before I vote on it, what we're paying for versus what it was before and the actual specific breakdown of what their services are.
There have been some things last year where they were doing some cleanup and it wasn't part of the contract, right? Um, so those are the kinds of questions you want to ask, okay? If we have tree branches that are coming down the park and you're here to do maintenance, you're picking the branches up, we're gonna charge this for, because in the past they've charged us for it. And I want to make sure that they're not going to be charging us like that. If they have a whole contract, we expect it. This looks really good because we're paying them a lot of money to do it.
A- another item is some of the rocks.
Flexion of the price.
Yeah.
Stuff you're saying.
Yeah, yeah, the other item that, that affects a lot is the rocks in the park. There was a lot of rocks in the grassy area by the hill with the tall slide. I've asked them to help move those rocks back down to like a little creek drain, so, you know, kids don't fall on the rocks.
Yeah.
And I think they've taken that up as well.
Yeah, they fixed that by the north part too.
It's not in the line item, so I, I would like to join the meeting and just kind of understand.
Well, I, yeah, I want to understand too. But I don't want to find out that we're gonna get charged fifteen thousand dollars for some kind of tree removal. Well, I'm gonna go, it should be in the price. Yeah, no one's really gonna take it.
It's interesting, I, um, we have these four proposals from cleanscapes and it's kind of like that game where you look at two pictures and try to tell the difference. It, it looks like to me the in-contract services are kind of the same with each one of them. They just have different numbers at the bottom.
Yeah, ones, ones with, so it's one year with chemical, one year without chemical, two year to lock in for the two years. So theoretically they should be the same in terms of this unless they change it, which actually I wouldn't be surprised.
Yeah, the services are the same. That's why I was wondering if it's, it's all the same services.
If we could present it in a table, so. Yeah, four options are available.
Cause it looks like they're giving us chemicals in every one of them.
One year without and then one year with and then.
And I go back down there.
Well, anyway, yeah, we don't need to solve.
Oh, that's interesting. Yeah, what section? Kind of, do they just do a different type of, that's another question.
That's what I wanted to get.
Yeah, it's like, what do they, what's the difference in terms of their?
Of the service.
Cam, scrub cam.
It looks like they're all the same to me, but we don't need to solve for that now. I'm just pointing that out. Yeah.
Yeah, interesting.
And so, um, do you want to take action on?
No, I think I'm waiting. I think we should wait.
If we're fine. It, if the council would wants to do it, what we could do is just, you know, authorize, uh, you know, Angie to have a conversation and just with our council and the vendor and decide which of these four proposals to accept. I don't think we're good with any of them. Cause the numbers are, the dollars are not that much different. I mean, it's your call, but.
Rick, did you want Angie to shop this around?
Uh, no, I don't think she needs to shop around, but I, but I do think we need to look at how much we paid them last year for the different services. Uh, what's included now in this base price that wasn't included last year because there were things like irrigation, you know, eight thousand dollars if it's irrigation system. I want to make sure that irrigation's a part of this price. So, um, and we'll check. What we want to be able to do is compare what we paid last year for services, what we paid this year for those same services so that we're not getting.
Yeah, I think the issue is having such a large contractor that then obviously out there on the, on the, uh.
Yeah, and he, and they did that a couple of times here, and I knew they did. But we're, you know, we weren't gonna go anywhere else because it couldn't finally be done.
And the auditors would obviously ask about that.
Yeah.
Why do you have a hundred thousand dollar contract and then an additional?
Right.
Twenty five spend, yeah.
So do, I'm fine with authorizing Angie to make this decision after you, Mark, Matt.
This is over Angie's, um, so it has to be by the council.
Well, we can approve.
We're gonna approve it right now.
Yeah.
We're gonna approve any of these four, let Angie make the decision after she organizes a meeting with you and the vendor.
Yeah.
I mean, that's my proposal.
And then if we learn something that is problematic, we'll, we'll come back.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Second. Rick. Uh, any additional discussion or questions?
The motion is to approve any of these four.
It is to approve entering into a contract of cleanscapes under any of the four proposals, uh, to be determined by the city administrator following a meeting with the vendor and, uh, and select city council members to sort through which is the best proposal for the city.
And then Marty, if there's an issue that we learn about.
Yeah.
Well, we'll all, Angie will stand out and say we're gonna bring it back to.
Yeah, we're not requiring Angie to sign. We're just authorizing her to do it and, um, and this way I'm thinking Marty, we don't have to take it up again next month. We're just, we'll make it, we'll make a decision and go on.
What if you land on a different item, I just.
Dollar amount?
It's gonna go down, not up.
Yeah, it's not gonna go up.
Yeah, I, I have confidence that Angie's can manage this and their talent, which is great, and so confidence in her ability to negotiate.
Yes, make it go down.
There you go. I like that answer. Uh, all, oh, he's second. Did you second?
Yeah.
Rick did, yeah. All in favor?
Alright.
I all opposed, none, motion carries. We'll move on now to our exciting piece. Oh, now we got a couple more. Alright, item H, discuss, consider and take action on reviewing an estimate for cybersecurity. Alright, this is something that we've been going back and forth on with various vendors for the last, I don't know, six months at this point. Angie, do you want to?
Yes.
Comment on.
We.
Cyber ops?
Yes, uh, basically the council approved B C three and they did not want to, uh, do the red lines that the city attorney, uh, wanted done for the master agreement. So I, uh, reached out to T M L risk group and they suggested that I look on, uh, it's called D I D. It's, it's like by board. And I picked, uh, this one and, uh, we went over everything that was needed. And this is a monthly cost to us for cybersecurity for all three laptops. Uh, and all of the council members and our, um, cybersecurity emails.
Is there an implementation cost?
That's the total cost right there monthly. There's not, uh, um, this, this not.
Start up to your.
No startup.
The other vendor I think was gonna charge us seventy thousand.
There was a significant.
Yes. But that included the three sixty five, uh, Microsoft program that we already paid for. So that was excluded in this.
Directly to Microsoft, okay.
I believe that's my understanding that so we currently use G C S and that we would be leaving that contract and starting a new contract with this provider. Yes, man, it's kind of just as simple as that. Yes.
And these are comparable services to the, okay, to the prior one that we.
Uh, well, this is a little bit lower because of the three sixty five, I guess, um.
The other one was gonna pass three.
Yeah.
Otherwise, oh, no, we totally don't make any margins.
Are we still connected to, um, the mud? Security at all?
Uh, the only thing is the G, G C S is through, um, the money.
Do you have, um, testimonials or references?
Yes, uh, several, because this is recommended through T N, T M L. And I can give you a list of, uh, that they cities have recommended them before.
One year contract?
Yes.
It auto renew or will we have to renew it?
We would have to renew it. If we don't like them, we can go with somebody else at that point.
Sixty one twenty year, just trying to go back to what the other, do you have the other Andy?
Let me see if I.
Also gonna try to beat you.
And I can send it to him. Yeah.
Yeah. So they had a one time, so this, this one is thirty percent less.
Yeah, the new proposal.
And then if we go back to the old G C S proposal.
Yeah, it's like a lot, a lot.
It was a lot more, just eight thousand upfront and then it's like a thousand a month. So one and a thousand a month, yeah.
Looks like, timing wise, we just renewed our Microsoft three sixty-five subscription.
Yes.
Um, just last month.
Seventy-four hundred, yeah, seven thousand. Eight thousand. But this, comparatively, instead of paying seven thousand and then eight thousand, this is six thousand. And they'll, they'll take the indemnification language?
Yes. I made a point to make sure that, uh, any red lines that our city attorney has, they had to.
I'm, I'm prepared to make a motion now.
Yep.
I'm, I'll make a motion to approve, a second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? None. Motion carries.
Thanks for all the work on this, Angie. I know it's been a lot of, a long time.
Yeah.
Getting to the, to the goal line and then. There you go. I think we can do twenty twenty-seven.
Up the mini golf.
Thirty-six before it's up.
My gosh.
Okay. Item I, discuss, consider and take action on rewarding the Waste Connections scholarship. And this scholarship is a one thousand dollar scholarship to high school seniors in partnership with the village and Waste Connections, our, uh, press provider. And so we had put out a request for seniors to apply and we have selected Tyce Bogdan as the winner.
Congratulations.
So this is a motion to approve him as the recipient of the waste management and Village of the Hills one thousand dollar scholarship to be presented at a later city council meeting.
I move to approve.
Second.
Uh, any questions, discussion?
Guns up.
This is his materials that are in it, isn't it? Okay. Yeah, looks like a very impressive young man, happy to support this.
Yeah, this is a great, a great, um, opportunity and Angie works with, uh, this is part of Angie's negotiation with waste management. So also thank Angie for flagging that and enforcing that through for us to be able to take part in that, uh, program that they have.
Well, they wanted to increase prices, so she got this.
Yeah.
Besides that, increasing prices.
Yeah.
Yep.
And congrats to the parents.
Congrats to the parents. That's right. Uh, alright, all in favor? I all opposed, none, motion carries. Congratulations, Tyce. Um, okay. Let me go into our, song and dance for the next part.
Read your script.
Okay, the mayor, we're now moving to executive session. The mayor and the city council may adjourn into executive session anytime during the course of this meeting to discuss any matters listed on the agenda authorized by the Texas government code, including but not limited to two sections. Five five one dash zero seven one consultation with attorney and government code five five one dash zero seven four personnel. Will be discussing in government code five five one dash zero seven four deliberate, deliberate the appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee. This one, just for clarification, would be discussing evaluation. And five five one point zero seven one consultation with attorney on issues regarding land use regulations within.